So as I said, I always start with a, try to start with the commercial message. Sorry, but Libra gets, you know, gets their plug here. But this month, we're going to be starting our Computer 101 classes. We've been upgrading our technology and now we have five laptops that are all tied in together, plus mine, that can go through this. So we're going to start a monthly, really, really beginner class, and mostly seniors. Our first topic is, is, we're not going to call it a throwaway, but it's a very specific one to give us a chance to walk through it. It's going to be a tour of the IRS website.
That's great.
Because it's going to be, right, about taxes. So that'll be, that'll be February 28. I think a great one might be Where Resources, get a chance to walk through Channel 6, Channel 7, well, does Channel 17 have a web presence? Probably not.
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay. So yeah, things like Channel 6, the Where in the World website, you know, places where you can get information on Where. But we're going to start off with IRS this coming month, and then we'll do, aim to do one or two a month all the way through. So that's the end of our commercial message. Welcome to our community coffee. This is not our usual time slot. We usually do the first Thursday, but that was, that was right around holiday time, so we didn't do it. And we had a chance to do this. Last year, we had one presentation of both the school and the town budgets and the town warrants and the school warrants, all in one coffee, and it was way too much. So it's great to break it up this time. We have the schools' chance, take the time, sort of take center stage. And then two weeks from today, on First Thursday in February, which I think is February 7th, we'll be back with the town budget and the town warrants. So we hope to get some of that information out. So we've got three guests today, two up front, and one is going to be stepping up from the, from the audience. Deborah Vanez from the John Stock School Board, Marge Berg from the Where School Board, and our superintendent, Tocomi, Lorraine.
Lorraine.
I keep wanting to call you Lauren. Lorraine Tocomi-Moore will be, will be here as well to answer some questions. Mostly, it's going to be great to just get the information out. The school budgets are fairly complex because they're frankly bigger operations than any of our town jurisdictions, and so it helps to do that. So I will get out of the way.
Thanks, Mike. We also have with us Patty Oswald from the SAU. She's our community outreach coordinator. And SAU 24 is pretty proud right now, so I have to give a little added information that Lorraine, our wonderful superintendent over here, has been named the New Hampshire Superintendent of the Year for 2019. So we're very proud of her and what we're keeping doing. And next month, she goes to Los Angeles and joins with the other 49 superintendents from the other states for a big fancy celebration. So I'm going to talk, sort of not in depth like I would at the deliberative session, but give you an overview of our warrant articles. The first two are simple. One is to accept our reports, and the other is to set salaries for the board officials. The third one is our budget. And our proposed budget is $15,307,48, and the default is $15,185,899. And I'm going to go through what all the articles are, and then I'll come back and talk about each one. Article four is to, is the teacher's contract in the amount of $206,785 in year one and $239,520 in year two. That's for the Where Education Association for our teachers. Article five is for the Paraeducators, and their contract is for three years. And first year is $44,592 in year one, an additional $34,498 in year two, and an additional $34,222 in year three. Article six is to raise and appropriate the amount of $251,000, offset by $114,400 in additional adequacy aid from the state, resulting in a $136,600 cost impact to expand our kindergarten program to an all-day kindergarten program. And Article seven is to raise and appropriate the amount of $28,353 to fund one-third of the cost of a student resource officer. And Deb will talk about another one-third, and when you come to hear the town in two weeks, they'll talk about the other third. And Article eight is to authorize a 15-year tax-neutral lease agreement to replace the boiler and other energy savings equipment. The boiler at Center Woods is the original boiler, and the school is going on 30 years, and our fingers crossed that the boiler won't die before we get the money to replace it with a new energy-saving boiler and program. So in addition to be very proud that we have the Superintendent of the Year, we're also proud of our schools and what our students are able to accomplish. And our focus this year has a lot to do with safety for our students and to promote a community of learners at the upper elementary school using responsive classroom and morning meetings. And at the elementary school, we're doing a positive school culture, and we're, we're doing more work understanding how childhood trauma impacts education and learning. And we're happy to announce that we received a $63,000 grant for Center Woods to increase ground-level security at that school. We also got some money to do work at the middle school. Now, this is for outside cameras. All right. I know that all these figures sound horrible when you don't get to see them up front because I wouldn't be able to remember them. But anyhow, our proposed budget for this year is an increase of $15,307,48, which is a 1.1% increase from the current year's budget, which is a default budget that we're working from. So the items that affect our budget, we have mandated drivers. A big one is health insurance costs, which are up 9%. That's the guaranteed maximum rate that we've been given from our insurance company. Our state requirement increases that have gone from 17.33 to 17.8%. We have no control over that. That's set by the state, and we have to come up with it. We have contracted services for speech, OT and PT. We have some outer district tuition, but we have some budget reduces, too. We have some census changes in our teaching staff. We've reduced some of our contracted services for special education and some supplies and our bond interest on the middle school. And that's because we renegotiated the finance of that bond several years back. So we're saving the town every money on the interest payments. Our health insurance, want me to read all those figures or just tell you that it's up? Dental, retirement, health insurance, in all totals $265,987, of which we don't have any control over.
That's health insurance and what else?
Pardon?
Health insurance and what else? What's an concern?
Dental, health, dental, retirement.
Okay.
That increase that the state mandated. Contracted services, most of which are special ed students, the SAU district share and outer district tuition. And then we have some other drivers that are in our proposed budget. Software, fuel, electricity, computer dues, and fees, maintenance supplies, which totals $44,341. So the mandated drivers and the other increases, $310,328. But as I said, we do have some census, reduces in the budget, salary census changes, which is almost $35,000. Our benefits, almost $20,000. Contracted services and special ed transportation are down. And some of our other corporate insurance supplies and new equipment have, are down a little bit. So the difference between the drivers and the reduces is $168,073. Now, if we had this on PowerPoint, you'd get to see a pretty pie-shaped thing that you can't see, except that all this dark section has to do with salaries and benefits. And we're in the people business, so we have to have people to teach our children, and that's where all those costs go. So there have been some changes to how the default budget has to be put together. So it consists of the current year's budget figure minus a one-time expenditure, plus or minus contractual obligations, anything related to health or safety issues, or anything The default budget for, on the ballot this year is $121,149 less than the proposed budget for 2019, 2020. I don't think we need all these other, come to the deliberative and you'll get all this stuff. But when I finish with this, if you have any questions, I can go back to this. Our teacher's contract, we had, we had a team of school board members that worked with the team from the Where Educator Association and came up with an agreement which offers a 5% increase to the base of year one and a two-and-a-half increase to the base in year two. It's a two-year contract and offers a more competitive wage structure, critical to our ability to hire and retain teachers. Because our salary scale is so low and so far below that the average teachers, beginning teachers' compensation in New Hampshire, we can't retain teachers. We lose them year after year after year. And that's not good for student learning because there's no consistency. The building that, that loses a lot of teachers and has new ones come in, has to work on building up team, culture, and mentoring that goes into teaching, keeping our, helping our new teachers. And so we, we really hope that this contract will pass so that we are able to offer a more competitive salary. It also reduces the amount of course reimbursement funding and district reimbursement from employees who leave the system. If we, we have a certain amount of money that we allocate for continuing education for our teachers, and if they leave the system within the year that they've received the reimbursement amount, they have to give it back to us. But in my mind, that's not a plus because we're losing a teacher even though we have given them more training. So, and in this contract, we have more meeting time for curriculum assessment and professional development. And we have increased incentives offered to, with our teachers, to elect health insurance outside of the district. That is, if they have a spouse who has a health insurance program where they work, we encourage them to take that instead of others. Our Paraeducators contract is a three-year contract, and it gives a 3% increase between the years for Para 1 and a 3%, 3.5% increase for those off-step. Our Para's now, we have a Para 2 category, which is a certified position where the teacher, the Paraeducators are trained more in one field or the other, meaning literacy or numeracy, so that they're able to be more effective in the classroom with those students that need that extra help. So the budget, teacher's contract and the Para's contract are sort of a package, even though they're separate warrant articles, and it only, it represents, it came in under 2.8%. We worked very hard to bring that down into what we hope is an acceptable increase because we need teachers and we need Para's. As I said, we're in the people business. We need those people, and we need to be able to compete in the education market and keep them. We also have an article of changing from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. 90% of the schools in the state of New Hampshire already have all-day kindergarten. And I'm sure that this all sounded complicated when I read it first. We already get $1,800 now for each child we have at half-day kindergarten. If we go to a full-day kindergarten, we will get an additional $1,100, which doesn't bring us up yet to the adequacy that we get for the other children in the school system. But it reduces the, the amount of money that starting in our full-day kindergarten would be. With the aid, the additional aid we get, we're only, the result is only an additional $136,600, and that includes two additional teachers, two additional Para's, and a one-time setup for a classroom equipment, desks and tables and chairs and whatever else we need to furnish those rooms. And it increases the learning time from two-and-a-half hours that they get now in half-day kindergarten to a full day. And it's a play-based program. It's not that the kids play all day, but their learning is incorporated into play. And it gives us more time for the children at that age to be identified if they have any needs, we need intervention on. If they, it looks like they need more help with reading or math, they get it before they get to first grade. The standards that are required for children entering first grade are a lot more rigorous than they were when some of us went to school, started school. So this is a great benefit to the students, to be able to have that full-day experience. And it helps them build up their stamina, too, to be able to go into first grade the following year into a different kind of atmosphere. So it's not daycare, believe me, it's not daycare, it's education. Children in all-day kindergarten will be able to distinguish between similarly spelled words by identifying the sounds of the letters that differ. I can't tell you how important that is. Two Fridays in January, I judged the spelling bee, one at Center Woods and one at the middle school. And some of the words that those children got, and Mike was one of the, was the reader, the pronouncer of the words for the older kids last week. Some words are so close together that if the children haven't learned early on some of the differences, it makes for difficult learning as they move through the grades. It also gives them an opportunity to identify characters and settings and stories, and it will help them with their writing as they begin to do that. And so our kindergarten students currently are in school for two-and-a-half hours a day. That gives them 450 hours a year. With full day, they will be in school for six-and-a-quarter hours a day, which is, will give them a total of 1,125 hours a year. That's almost triple the amount of time they get now, not quite. I have plenty more on all-day kindergarten. The next article is for student resource officer, which will be shared, the cost of which will be shared three ways. A third of it by the Where School District, a third of it by the John Stock District, and a third of it by the town out of the police budget. It will help build a positive community relationship between the students and the police. It will help in the creation of a safe learning environment for our students. It will give additional support for preventive actions and enhance safety in and around our schools, if I can find. Deb and I are using this extra chair as our table. It's not that we don't like each other. I have something I wanted to say. Anyhow, I have this big report from the Secret Service that points out how helpful having a student resourceer in the school is. And I also have, let's see.
Would this officer be at all the schools occasionally or just in John Stock?
No, they'll be in all the schools.
Oh, it will be.
Rotate through. It's not necessarily to respond to a crime or a violent act that's already occurring, but having a student resource, resource officer available in a building is a valuable resource to prevent crime in the first instance. One of the pieces, little nuggets that I got from the National Association of School Resource Officers is that for a child that has some tendencies to disobey, having a positive influence of an officer available could keep them from ending up with a criminal record as they grow up. And it's sort of a three-pronged approach that they would offer into the school. One, as an additional teaching resource, like teaching classes occasionally, the day appropriate, for example. One would be to be a counselor or a mentor to some of these children, students that are struggling, and also to act officially in the role of a police officer. And our last article is a tax-neutral heating and energy project. As I said, the boiler at Center Woods is on its last legs. And this article is for $865,740. Oh, no, that's the, yeah, and we'll have a lot of savings equipment. We'll have a propane boiler, new insulation, LED lighting, and controls and transformer upgrade. The company that will hopefully do the work guarantees $85,000 a year from energy savings in our operating budget. It will be a lease as opposed to outright purchase. And it contains a non-appropriation clause, i.e. an escape clause. And John Stock did a similar project last year. This was a little bit bigger because they have a larger building, and they were able to put in a new boiler and a silo outside with wood chips. So we're not, we'll not be able to do wood chips because our building has not been big enough, but it's going to be a really good project. So the proposed tax impact of our budget, our proposed budget and all the warrant articles as presented is an increase of $1.31 for $250,000 house. It would look like $327.50 if we get the increase. With the default budget, it would be $292.50. So now that you have all those figures carefully recallable in your head, I'll answer questions. Mike?
All right. Wearing my reporter's hat at this point. The kindergarten article obviously is the one that, that people really are talking a lot about. And you bring up the stamina question, that it builds kids' stamina. The other side of that question, I think, has to be addressed, and that is, you're talking about four- and five-year-olds spending six-and-a-quarter hours a day in school. Does this concern you at all?
So we just implemented kindergarten in Hennecker for a full day. So they have to be five to start the program. So in Hennecker, we actually, we made it optional. I don't know if it would be here as well. So parents can kind of gauge if their child has that. Some kids have been in daycare all, all day for a long time, so they've already had an exposure to being out of the house for a whole day, but some kids haven't. And so I know for my kids, that might be a harder transition, so they might work into it. So come for four hours a day and then work their way up to a full day. But certainly, the teachers are trying to take really good note of how well a child is kind of enjoying that full day, and they have built in some rest time, a little bit of quiet, a little bit of downtime, so that the kids are not, hopefully not exhausted by the end of their, of their full day. But at Henneck, in Hennecker, we're finding that the kids are, they're doing really well. There's enough combination of being up and being mo, you know, in motion, and then there's enough, you know, sitting and, you know, having circle and reading time. There's enough transition there that they're not overwhelmed by the end of the day, but they're really keeping good track of it and also just really relying on the parents to, to gauge how their little one is doing and if it's too much or not too much. And it's, it's going really, really well there, and I'm hopeful that the community would support that for these little ones.
Staying on the same subject, I didn't hear anything mentioned about transportation for these children coming in. Are they going to be riding the school buses for the rest of the year?
Kindergarten children will ride the school buses, yes.
And do now, right?
No.
Now they don't have a bus, so they won't.
The parents are responsible for transportation right now. The kindergarten children will ride the school bus, but because we redid the way, the starting time at the middle school and the upper elementary school this year, we have enough, we will have enough space on the buses to accommodate kindergarten children. So we're not going to have to have higher more buses.
Do they ride with, what age bracket would they ride with?
They would ride with the elementary school and high school.
High school kids?
The middle school would, and, middle school and upper realm must ride the same bus.
They do. We moved two grades, right, we moved fourth and fifth off of those buses, so they're now riding with the middle school buses, so that the elementary and high school bus are transporting two fewer grades than we were last year. So it could easily absorb the kindergarten.
If I could, one more question on that. You mentioned that the initial startup cost is going to be, I think you said $137,000, if that's fair.
About that, yeah.
Now, is that, is that some kind of a grant the state gave you for the first year to get it kicked off with, or?
Say it again?
You mentioned something about some money from the state for the first year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Is that an initial grant for the initiation fee for the kindergarten?
No, it's just that we would receive additional funds for each child that's registered into an all-day program.
Year over year, so it's a, yeah. Just like we did the other.
The offset from the state aid would be $114,400.
Now, could you tell me, how many more teachers would be required to initiate this?
Two teachers and two Para's.
Just two more teachers?
Yes. Because we have teachers that teach morning and afternoon sessions now. And that, with the cost of teachers and their benefits and the Para's, it's $190,000. And the one-time expense is $26,000. And we are allocating $35,000 to relocate the preschool to the, to available space at the middle school. And preschool children will be transported by their parents.
Yes, they are.
As they are now.
Could I ask a question based on your contract?
Yes.
You were mentioning the teacher's contract. You were mentioning the teacher's contract that you were losing teachers. And I think you mentioned that the newer teachers were having, you were having a hard time maintaining those. Could you tell me, in the contract, what the percentage is? And did you take into effect that the areas where you're having a hard time retaining the teachers, that that would be the increase more so than the other areas of your? In other words, if you have a hard time retaining, let's say, first through five-year teachers, in the contract, did they get a bigger boost in? I don't, I don't know if you mentioned what the percentage increases were. But were the percentage increases larger for those areas that you have a hard time retaining teachers for than for the areas where the teachers probably are more senior?
Yes, yeah, I know exactly what you're asking, John. Yes, the salary table was raised five percent, and that's where the newer teachers are. The teachers that were off-step received, I don't have that contracted with me, but I think it was about a two-thousand-dollar, flat two-thousand-dollar raise. So the percentage rate for the newer teachers was higher than those that were, for veteran teachers, if that's your question. The other thing is that the, our base salary currently is just a little over thirty-five thousand dollars a year. The surrounding school districts are starting at least at thirty-eight or forty or forty-two. So it's hard to attract teachers to the Ware district. And then some of them will come and we'll hire them. But after two or three years, again, using that differential of anywhere from six to eight thousand dollars on any given year of the salary table, they can go to any surrounding community and earn that additional six, seven, eight, ten thousand dollars to do the exact same job. And, you know, we all have to put food on our table and pay our bills. And so, you know, I'm not faulting those young teachers. But in my mind, it's penny pound, penny wise and pound foolish. And what I mean by that is that for every new teacher that we hire, and let's not even look at the administrative costs of getting together a screening committee and doing the interviewing and what time that takes for the building-level administrators. And then they all come up to the SAU, and we have to do background checks on all of them because we want our kids safe. So let's not even look at the administrative costs, but those administrative costs are real. Every brand-new teacher gets a mentor. Every brand-new teacher is trained in our literacy program or our math program because they don't come with those skill sets. Every school district might have a slightly different way of teaching math or literacy. So we have to invest in all of that professional development. We invest in the mentors to help retain them and help them be successful as a first, second, third-year teacher. So those dollars go out the door with them. And Marge had mentioned in this contract, one of the, one of the benefits that, you know, it's a double-edged sword, as Marge said, but one of the benefits of this contract is that if we start paying for higher education, in other words, a young teacher starts working on his or her master's degree, if they leave in that certain year and they took three courses, they need to pay that money back to the school district. So that it's another way to hopefully give an incentive for those teachers to stay with us. So it's a real, it's a true problem. We cannot hire people. We had three guidance counselors. The Ware School District has four guidance counselors total. We had three of those four leave. And we hired one position twice because before this young educator signed her contract, she was interviewing other places that were paying more. And so we had to, we had to re-advertize and fill one position twice. And so it is, it's really, really not, not doing what's best for kids at the end of the day.
Could I ask, based on this contract, if it were to pass, and you stated that thirty-five thousand, roughly in that area, was the starting salary, what would it be if this contract were to pass?
I believe it's thirty-eight-five. So it's about a thirty-five-hundred-dollar increase over what we currently have.
Is that in the first year?
That's, that, the whole, the whole salary table has been moved. So the first, the first-year educator would receive thirty-eight-hundred, five-hundred, thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred dollars as opposed to thirty-five-six, I think is where we are now.
But this is a what, a two-year contract for you?
It's a two-year contract.
So would that be over the two-year period or would it be right?
That's, that's in year one, and in year two, it goes up another five percent. So, so we're, we're up to, it's thirty-nine and change. I shouldn't have brought that contract with me, but it's about thirty-nine and change. What, what our goal was, and we knew we couldn't do it in one contract, it would have been too costly. Our goal was to have a starting salary of forty. And even with that, we're playing catch-up, again, with some area school districts. I can tell you, I was at a meeting with the Hillsborough Deering Superintendent last week. And he told me that his starting salary next year, and again, we're not just competing with Hillsborough Deering, is forty-six thousand dollars a year. So we've got a lot of catching up to do, and we can't do it in one year. We couldn't go from a starting salary of thirty-five thousand up to forty-six in one year. It would be prohibitive in terms of cost. But that's the reality of what, what we're looking at in terms of trying to attract teachers to teach in the, in the Ware School District in particular. John Stark does a little bit better, and Hennecker does a little bit better. But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm sort of like the mama bear. They're all, they're all my kids at SAU twenty-four. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say, well, you know, Hennecker and John Stark are doing okay, so we'll just, you know, limp along. I would like some equity throughout the district. But I'm a realist, too. I know we cannot do this in one fell swoop. But this is a really good step to closing that gap.
Is there a generalized percentage of year to year for the two-year period? Like, is it five percent the first year and three percent the second year?
And two and a half, two and a half.
Two and a half the second year.
What?
Five percent the first year. And two and a half the second year.
Five and two and a half, seven and a half. But it's spread differently. It's spread, it's not across the board. It's not across the board like she was just saying. So the younger teachers will get more of it and the senior?
Yes, the people that are not on that salary table. And the salary table in Ware is twelve or thirteen steps right now. Whereas in Hennecker and John Stark, we've got a twenty-step salary table. The people who are beyond step thirteen were getting a flat increase. Whereas the people on that table in years one through thirteen are getting the raises that Marge talked to you about.
If you went into Lorraine's office, on the wall is a whiteboard that's about twice the size of this television screen. And it lists Hennecker, John Stark, Ware started, and how many teachers in any given year she's hiring, the teachers end up ours. And the Ware list is always, I mean, granted, we have more students, but it's the biggest chunk that takes up her whiteboard of the teachers, the positions that need filling. Some of them are due to retirement, which is expected, but a lot of it is just because some of them go to Handelford's after-school hours and fill brochure bags for people.
I hear this, I've been following the school and the town for a few years, and I hear this every year when a teacher's contract comes up. Every year, it's the same reasoning, because we're not competitive. I mean, there are other facts. My daughter's a school teacher. She lives in Charleston. She chooses not to teach in Boston. She can make twenty, thirty thousand dollars more a year. In Massachusetts, they have to have a master's degree, so she's got a master's degree. She teaches outside in the suburb for non-educational reasons. How are we going to compete realistically with towns that are either more affluent or are larger and are willing to pay teachers? Maybe it's one of the same, they're larger, they're more affluent, I don't know, but they're willing to pay teachers more. If everything was equal, all the teachers would be paid the same amount of money. That's not happening, and it won't happen. So aren't there other factors that are a draw to teachers to come to Ware? And aren't we going to lose teachers on a regular basis? I don't know. Are we losing teachers at a higher rate than other communities because of?
Yes, huge.
And you have statistical data to back that up, I'm sure, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So how? So it was mentioned earlier that we can't do it all at once. While every year, the teacher's contract comes up, it's the same reason. And you've got teachers, you have had teacher contracts approved. And we never, we never, ever reached that point where, okay, we're just going to stay competitive now. We're not trying to catch up anymore. We're trying to stay competitive. But isn't there some kind of a, you know, bell curve, so to speak, for Ware versus other communities in terms of their tax base or the size of the school system and the opportunities the teachers have within that school system? I mean, it seems to me there are other factors than just a straight salary that would draw, draw teachers to Ware. Now, if it's straight salary, then they're just hired guns, you know, they'll go anywhere, right? For more money. There are people like that. But I think there are also people that like the community and want to stay in the community, whether they live here or not, because they like the world of Ware, so to speak. So I'm just concerned that we're never going to get to that point. And every year, you have the same reason.
We can't jump from the thirty-five whatever we pay a starting teacher now to forty-six in one year. We have to do it.
How are you going to catch up? Because other, there are other contracts that are being approved in these other towns.
You can't ever catch up.
Exactly.
If I could maybe do that really quickly. So I absolutely hear what you're saying. We won't ever, in Ware, maybe never catch up, catch up. But at least if there was a base salary to come in that was a bit more livable, because there are lots of good things about Ware, right? Being here in a rural area is wonderful. The benefits across the state of New Hampshire for teachers are pretty standard, right? The insurances, within a few percent, are pretty standard. Life insurance, disability insurance, days off, that kind of thing looks very similar across the whole state. You're not going to find a lot of differences there. The place that you're going to find a difference really is in the culture and climate in our schools. And we really, we do a great job. Our leadership across our schools here in Ware, and I've been blessed to be able to come over and see that as well, and at the high school and the surrounding, in SAU twenty-four really is so good. And I think we take good care of our teachers. But if you're a young teacher coming out of school with thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars in student loan debt, thirty-five thousand dollars, you just can't do it. I mean, it just cannot be. They have to start somewhere a little bit more. But I think if they're here and they can have a modest salary, that they'll fall in love with being here. But unfortunately, that draw, you know, a thousand or two thousand dollars draw to a different district might not be so much. But when you're looking really close by and the draw is eight or ten thousand more to go to another school, it's hard, it's hard to trade that off as a young person trying to pay your bills. I think that's where it is. But I think the culture in the schools with the leadership, all the way up to Lorraine's level, is really, really good. So if we could get them here and keep them for a few years, I think we really would keep them. That really goes all the way around. But I think that's the difference. We just got to get them in the door.
Another question on a different subject. As Marge had mentioned earlier, there were some changes to RSA regarding the default budget. And in fact, all the governing bodies now need to present the default budget for discussion. Was there a conscious?
I've got that slide here.
Yeah, I don't want to go into a lot of detail because there is a lot of detail in the budgets. But did the school and the SAU make a conscious effort to not have individual line items in the default budget higher than the same items in the proposed budget? Because that's been an issue, and it's an issue with the town. But I had, I was told that the school did make an effort not to increase. It's, in other words, it's a numerical calculation. You carry over the old number, even though in the proposed budget this year, that number is less. It could be a contracted service or whatever. It went from fifty down to thirty, and they retained the fifty in the default budget because by law, you're allowed to. I'm just wondering, was there a conscious effort by whoever calculates and goes through the default budget to achieve a situation where there's nothing in the default budget, outside of contractual obligations that you have, legal obligations, that is higher than the proposed number in the, in the proposed budget?
First of all, I'm going to, I'm going to answer that in a couple of ways. First of all, we took the new legislation absolutely to heart. I mean, absolutely to heart, to the point where in Ware, and there's still some controversy about it, but I said, I'm going to go conservatively. I'm not going to go liberally on this one. And the controversy is, last year's budget in Ware was a default budget. We interpreted that as, that was not a voter-approved budget. That was a default number. So there are some school districts that are using, if they're in default, they're using last year's default budget as their baseline. We went back to the budget that we were awarded in March of two thousand sixteen. So it's our sixteen-seventeen budget, because that was not a default budget. That was a voter-approved budget. And those were the numbers where we started to build our default budget. So in essence, we are now three years behind. I don't know if you're following me, but we've been in default for two years. So we haven't used our default number. We went back to two thousand sixteen-seventeen and used our, the proposed budget that was passed in that year as our baseline.
Isn't, doesn't the RSA stake last year's budget?
It says last year's budget. And this is where there is a confusion, and I think it's going to land in the court. And you know what? I didn't want the Ware School District or the John Stark School District or the Hennecker School District to be the test cases. So I, as I said, I went conservatively on this. And the confusion is, is the default number really a voter-approved budget? Or is it, as the name suggests, a default number if you don't get the proposed budget? I wasn't going to take that risk. So we went back to our last voter-approved budget at John Stark and Hennecker and in Ware. And it happened to be in Ware in March of sixteen.
Well, just because of mechanics of voting, I mean, in lieu of voting for the proposed budget, obviously, the default budget comes into, I guess, the approved budget.
Right.
But are you saying the only way to resolve that in an abstract way is to have the default budget as a voteable item and the proposed budget as a voteable item? So you could say, based on your interpretation?
It's still the legislature to decide, not us.
And I, and I think that what this new legislation did is just what you're suggesting. This is the first time, as you pointed out, that the default budget needs to be presented as a budget. It's no longer a number, it's a budget. I mean, I've been doing this for nine years, and I've always gone into great depth with our proposed budget and with our default budget. I've said, and if you choose not to vote for this, here's the default number. And that's what I was basing my interpretation of the legislation on. It was a number. So, so that's, that's why the default budget in Ware might have some fluctuations in it. To get to the second part of your question, can I tell you that every line item matches or is less than the proposed? No, I cannot tell you that. But I can tell you that non-union salaries, right, were not taken from last year's budget or the year before. Our non-union salaries were budgeted at the sixteen-seventeen rate because that's what the law is requiring us to do.
And are you saying that they, those budgeted salaries for the paraprofessionals?
No, those were contracts.
Okay.
For the non-contractual principals.
Okay, contractual, I don't know what that represents.
So that would be our principal, our assistant principal, some of our, some of our other positions, like a school psychologist, that are not covered under a collective bar?
It's not a, it's not a relationship to other groups of teachers.
It's twelve people or so.
But that means if the default passes, that those people, their salaries go back three years.
But if that number was approved in the proposed budget in sixteen-seventeen, they're carried over into the default budget for the following year because the vote is approved.
No.
The voters, in fact, approve?
Sixteen-seventeen.
But they didn't in Ware. They gave us our default. So our default number was the same one.
I thought you said something. I thought you went back to point fifteen.
Yep, sixteen-seventeen.
Where you said it was, okay.
But.
So what year did you go back to to establish this default budget?
Sixteen-seventeen.
Which I thought you said was the approved budget.
That was the approved budget.
Okay, I was just asking. Okay, I thought you just asked. So the, the approved budget in sixteen-seventeen, the numbers for those individuals, non-union individuals, or non-contracting individuals, are carried over into the default budget for the following year, because the voters approved that number when they approved the operating budget.
They didn't approve raises.
But the raises were in there, if the raises were a separate article or weren't, and they didn't approve it, yeah, they don't go in. But if the raises were approved as a separate article, they get rolled in from that point on to default and proposed.
No, the raises were in the proposed, the raises were not in the default.
Okay, if the proposed budget got approved, then that should carry over to the following year.
But it didn't for two years. That's my point. It did not for two years.
Those two people are one-year contracts.
They're one-year contracts.
That's why it's hard, because those folks are a one-year contract, like a principal one year at a time. So if it hasn't been approved in the last couple, they're stuck going back to that.
I just, a couple of the questions on a different subject. I, I just, on two different subjects. One is the school resource officer. There's been questions, the finance committee, as you may be aware, has voted it down. I think it was, it was eleven morning, one against the school resource officer. I'm not sure if that was for John Stark. I think it would be the same for all three. They can't just do it for one and then say, well, we'll approve it for the town side. It just doesn't make sense. And it's always been an issue, and it's been discussed even recently, about safety. You had mentioned it as a third prong, I think. And it, it's always been a concern that the safety maybe isn't primary reason anymore, they're split between three schools. When they're at the high school, I guess you consider safety as a, kind of a one, A, B, and C or something, where now it's like two, three, and four. So I, I, and I don't understand the argument of having, of being a student, maybe relying on a, as a mentor, a police officer. To me, the, the teachers and the counselors, everyone that works in the school, has the potential of being a mentor and identifying problems before they become major. And in my mind, regardless of who the individual is, and we've gone through several school resources at John Stark, some were successful, some not, we haven't had one for at least, I think, three years, two or three years or so. Longer than that?
Yep, longer than that.
Yeah, the older I get it, it's, it's a known fact that anyone can't.
I mean, you haven't got all these figures I threw out.
Yeah. I can't do the school budget. I can do the town, I can put my hand around a tractor, but when it comes to the school, I just, it's hard. I just don't see the benefit of having a school resource officer to act as a, as a resource for students in terms of mentoring or a person they could go to. I would be very reluctant to go to a police officer, because your name gets recorded, and I've seen it happen, I was a selectman for six years, that gets recorded within the system. Whether you've done something wrong or not, your name is within the system. So I'm a little, and I know their national statistical data, and I, I kinda don't trust them, because I don't like to be lumped into the things that are going on nationally. It's not happening in where, and hopefully it never happens in where, you can't guarantee it, certainly.
I think that's the hard part, right, is we, we don't know what's gonna happen. We have, at the high school, we have had some threats, as you're probably painfully aware of. And we've had some even at the, at the middle school here in where. Part of, you know, as we looked at the school resource officer, I think as board members on, in all the boards, where and in John Stark, we realize that there is a lot, there's a lot of controversy about that. People feel very strongly one way or the other. That's why it's a separate warrant article, so that folks can really make their own choice about it. We look at the resource officer with the younger kids about creating positive relationship between kids and local law enforcement, because that's, that's a spot where they may be more open to that idea. And at the high school, quite frankly, having somebody who is a police officer around is, is not the worst thing in the world, to have somebody there on site to be able to respond. And it's tough, because it's a third of their time would only be spent at the high school and then with the other schools. So you can't guarantee the officer's gonna be around if there's an issue there. There is some deterrent effect to know that there's a police officer on campus. There is some community relationship building, certainly, but folks can really feel very, very differently about having an officer in the school. And so really, it's gonna be up to the communities to decide.
You just gotta, you got a hurdle.
And that's okay.
And it's probably not, not going to the task.
If folks decide no, then it's no, and that's fine. I mean, whatever the communities decide, that's really, it's okay.
Going back to your point of them getting into the, their name goes into the police records, that's not necessarily so. This is from the National Association of School Resource Officers, that discipline, and I'm quoting right from it, disciplinary issues that would be handled by teachers and or administrators if the school resource officer were not there. So the, the police don't arrest students based on that. They're, they're there to help troubled students avoid getting involved in the juvenile justice system. And I know that for a fact from talking to a resource officer, who has parents come to him two or three years later and say, thank you, you saved my kid from going to jail, because of the way they are treated. The police officers can look at situations in a school with a different set of glasses, as opposed to what the teacher and the counselor sees. They're trained to, to, to recognize things differently than our teachers and our counselors do. The teachers are there to teach, but if the kid can't learn because of trauma they bring from home, maybe the police are aware of some of that and can intervene in a way that the rest of us can't.
So we've had a history, though. Right, I mean, it's not something that we've never done. We've done it for several years, we've had at least, at least three, at least three different school resource officers. So all those were very successful and provided the, those things that you're talking about. I haven't heard it, but.
I don't know that we've ever had a model that looks like this, where they're gonna be splitting time. And I think it's really clear that it hasn't always been successful. And you know what? The number one thing that has to happen to make it successful is a good hire. And that, there, there's, there's gonna be a challenge there. There's gonna be a real challenge there. And either that's gonna go and, and happen, and really, you know, whoever is gonna be part of that hiring team is really gonna find the right person, because either you're gonna have the really right person to be, it takes a special person to be an officer and to be in school and be a part of kids' lives. That is a different person than just a, an officer who's gonna be on the street. That hire has to be, look, has to look a little different. And my hope is that we could find somebody like that. If we can't, then, then we shouldn't do this. I mean, frankly, it has to be the right person.
Of course.
And you're right, it hasn't always, I don't think it's always gone well. I think that's where we are taking, there's a little leap here, for sure.
I just have one other, a question, I don't wanna take up too much time. I just gotta make, I gotta do this job too, so. I think I've been on you for ten, fifteen minutes. You have the school resource officer, I think that's gonna be a tough one. I've talked to some parents, and, or they've talked to me, and, and they were really concerned about the kindergarten, is it kindergarten age, five-year, five-year-olds? They were really concerned about it at the high school because of the potential of interaction with the older kids. I've walked through the high school, I've heard some of the language, and it really offends me. But have, has it been made aware that they're gonna be traveling to the high school? I don't know from where, in where, with high school kids? Because I think they'd be just as concerned about them being on a bus with the older kids than there would be some passing through the hall or something at the high school. And what would the cost be?
The kindergarten children are not gonna be at the high school, they're gonna be at Santa Woods. The preschool children are going to be at the middle school, and they're not on a bus.
Oh, I thought there was discussion that the-
I ride in the bus with high schools, right?
Yeah, that's the, the issues with the, I'm sorry if I made reference to the high school. At the time, I think there was discussion that the, the program, the full, full-day kindergarten would be at the high school.
No, never.
Oh, never?
At the, at one point, we talked about preschool moving to either the high school or the middle school, and we landed on the middle school.
Oh, okay. So to me, there's a, what would the cost be to isolate those children from other children in terms of transporting them back and forth? Is it, is it like, we just can't, we can't consider that?
Don't they have a, the older kids go to the back of the bus anyhow, and the little kids sit in the front of the bus?
Well, okay.
It's, it's not ideal, but it, transportation is expensive.
But that's the way it's been in Hennecker always. They all, all ride the same.
It's not my concern, because I certainly don't have any-
Our first graders are-
Our first graders are currently riding with our high schoolers.
My children's children are even older than that, so.
Well, how about the half-schoolers, the ones that go now? Who do they ride with now?
The littler ones, they get dropped off.
The kindergartners do not transport them or not?
The times don't line up with the other time.
So how do they get to school?
Parents.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
The half-day kindergarten.
The half-day kindergarten is going there.
Yes, there, there's no transportation for kindergarten right now.
Okay. Didn't know that.
Thank you, either way.
When the first graders were first put on the bus, or the elementary school students were first put on the bus with the high school, it was like a big panic in the background. And it, it pretty much subsided, and years have gone by, and I know it's only one example. My granddaughter rode the bus, but she was in elementary school with a high school. She didn't come back, she didn't follow language or anything. It just, you know, it, it is, it's vulnerable. Hennecker, you said that all the time, I, I grew up a long time ago, riding on a bus with all, everybody, high school food, everybody went on the same bus.
That's a one-room classroom back then.
No, not quite.
I'm just expressing a concern that was made to me by parents, it's not my concern.
It, it, it just, I don't think it ever developed into a problem with the elementary school kids. And granted, there's one-year difference, but I can't foresee that.
Well, there was one year when Ben Ojello made a proposal to kinda-
Well, that was a long time ago.
Not that long ago.
I have a-
Yeah.
Is there a room at Santa Woods for full-day kindergarten? Are they gonna have to re-
That's why we have to move the preschool. And we will-
Oh, okay.
By moving things around, the music room may end up being music on a cart and travel to the classrooms, and that room will become classroom kindergarten. It'll work. I know there may be more questions, but I wanna give Deb a chance to talk about John Stark.
Just a quick one. Is the kindergarten program, is that gonna be a mandated program for every child as far as he's old?
No.
No, so. It's maybe at six, so it's optional.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question about kindergarten? Do the, is, they're gonna study down if they go full-time, that they need less help in the other grades?
If this, if the-
Would it cut down on PRS?
No, not necessarily. It would just give them, give teachers an opportunity to do more intervention at an earlier age. If the children are struggling, say, with numbers, math, early math teaching would be part of the curriculum in kindergarten, and if the children are struggling with that, then teachers would, and the parents would be able to give extra help. So that by the time the child got to first grade, they wouldn't need as much intervention, or maybe not as a special ed. There are all, all benefits, yes. And it's no secret here in where that we are struggling with our children's test scores. They're not as good as we would like them, partially because of budgets and not being able to retain teachers. But if our children have the opportunity of all-day kindergarten, they get some of that intervention earlier, that will, that will help improve test scores as they go along, because they, we won't be having to try to play catch-up still at the third grade or something. Deb?
Thanks. All right, Deborah Baynes, I'm gonna talk about the John Stark budget. Please excuse my stuffiness, I have terrible colds. So for the next school year, for the nineteen-twenty school year, the John Stark proposed operating budget comes in at thirteen million, six forty-five, nine oh three. That's one point seven percent above the current year's budget. And the default budget in comparison is thirteen million, five thirty-nine, eight seventy-one. That's point seven eight percent above the current year's budget. So the difference, we're talking just about a percent difference between the default and the proposed, both being up a bit from where we currently are. So the things that make the budget go up for John Stark is we are entering into, this will be this second year, boy, I have to get all the contract years right, second year of our teacher contract up there, so the already voted-in, just regular raises have created a bump. Benefits and insurance, just like Marge was sharing, we have a nine percent GMR, healthcare costs continue to rise, so that insurance is, is what it is, it goes up a bit. Transportation, so we are actually, I think, across the whole SAU, struggling with some transportation extra costs, partly because of homeless transportation. So we may or may not realize, but what happens is when we have somebody, a child who's been in district who's considered homeless, and they go someplace else, we have to share the transportation cost for them in the district wherever they've landed. So we're fifty percent of their transportation cost. So, and that might be anything from a family who's couch surfing with a relative, or just kind of in a holding pattern with a friend for a bit until they get established. So that's becoming more of a thing, and so that is actually increasing the budget a bit on transportation. And then non-union salaries, you heard a little of that conversation with Marge about principals and folks who are outside of the collective bargaining agreements, just like in any other job, they're not working for the same salary they did five years ago, there are just incremental couple of percent increases over time. So we are, those are the things that drive us up a little bit on the budget. There are a couple of other more articles for John Stark. One is our support staff contract. And so Zach and I negotiated with the support staff. It's similar to what you heard with where and similar for Hennecker, is that we have a hard time hiring and retaining. And at John Stark, support staff includes not just the parents, but includes buildings and grounds and kitchen. And our buildings and grounds-
And secretaries.
And secretaries, thank you. So our office staff. So we have folks who work in a variety of different areas, all covered under one umbrella. For example, at Stark, we've had a very low starting hourly rate for buildings and grounds folks. It's been ten or sub-ten dollars an hour, and that's been incredibly hard to hire buildings and grounds folks. So we know that. Same with paraprofessionals. Those are folks who are, these men and women are working with our, our educationally disabled students, they may even have physical disabilities. And some of the kids, as they get bigger, this job gets even harder to do, and we're asking them in the past, they've been working for a fairly low wage as well, and we've had a hard time hiring and retaining some of those folks as well. We actually have a very, we have an interesting, I guess, differential up at Stark with our parents. We have, a number of those folks are sort of in that new category, and then we have some folks who've been with us for a really long time. And so those folks find themselves off the salaries schedule there. But this year, when we negotiated, instead of doing steps across the board the way that we have done that, we expanded that, that salary grid out, made it a twenty-year grid, which does some really good things. One is it, it gives us a predictable starting wage, and the end wage after twenty years, we know what that is, so it takes a little longer. You used to have twelve or thirteen years between start and sort of what you call your sort of highest wage, and now we've expanded out to twenty years. So bending the curve a little less sharp, a little gentler bend on the curve between lower and higher salary, we've created that over twenty years. Without COLA, it's just a very, it's a small percent increase over each year, over year, over year. But we took that whole grid, instead of starting it at ten dollars an hour, we've moved that to twelve plus an hour. And that helps us to compete with McDonald's and Target, who Target right now is hiring at twelve dollars an hour. McDonald's has been doing the same with an educational benefit and a hiring bonus, we don't have that, for our parents. So it's been very hard to, to get and retain folks, because it's a whole lot easier to go to Target and work for twelve or thirteen dollars an hour, or even Walmart, who are, if you're hired full-time there, you're getting benefits, which is not something that we're offering to our support staff. They could buy into the insurance, but it's, it's pricey to do that, it eats up pretty much their entire paycheck. So folks who do choose to come and choose to ignore the insurance are doing that, because it's a way to earn insurance if their significant other has a wage. So the contract, what it does is it has a, it has a substantial bump in year one, it's a seventy thousand- It's a seventy thousand dollar bump in year one because it's taking that whole salary grid and shifting it over by a few dollars an hour just to start. So that bump is substantial. Year two, twenty-six thousand, year three, twenty-seven thousand for the bumps in salary. But it does get everybody back on that twenty year grid with small increments in salary increase over that grid. So it's less, less large bumps, smaller bumps over a longer period of time. And that really took us into a nice, something that we hope as we negotiate further, we're just taking that grid and, you know, there'd be slight increases over time and instead of having to have this sort of really reassessment just to get people in the door. So that's one of the articles. The other articles, the resource officer, what you heard is the same class, the twenty-eight, three fifty grid. We're asking, many of you are aware about the expendable trust that we have. So we have expendable trust that some years we say, hey, could we take some of this surplus, if there is a surplus at the end of the year, take a certain dollar amount and put it into these trust funds to hold it, to be able to pay for things that might come up. And one of the areas that does come up for us at Stark is special education costs. If you have a child move into the district who needs an out of district placement or a child who has progressed to a point where they need an out of district placement, it's really expensive. Could cost us between a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, all the way up to two hundred thousand dollars with transportation for one kid who goes out of district. So right now, we have enough in that fund right now to fund an out of district placement. But if we have one more, if we have one other child come in, there's not enough to do that. So we're asking for thirty thousand to go in, out of surplus to go into that fund, just in case. Because trying to absorb a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our regular operating budget if a kid moves in is not, it's not beadable. So that's a fund that we use for that. The other, we want to establish a capital improvement expendable trust. We don't have that right now. And the reason we're asking to do that is the facilities committee up at Stark has done a really good job with the folks on the ground there and the building level of folks, of really laying out a long-term plan of what needs to happen in the building. We just did the boiler project, which is amazing. If you have a chance to go look at it, it's quite the project. We just had a sort of a ribbon cutting, so to speak, where we went up and saw the actual boiler in place in the silo where the wood chips go and all of that, which is really amazing. But, you know, even that will wear out someday and we all know that. And so as we look at budgets and our mission, you know, is to keep it as low as we possibly can. But if we keep a budget really low and we kind of kick the can down the road on keeping our building up to date and, you know, fixing things that need to be repaired, we're really just passing the buck on what we should be fixing. And so by having a capital improvement plan, which is on the SAU website, feel free to go and look at it, dig into it. It's right there. There's the John Stark Capital Improvement Plan. You can take a look at it. There's a lot of expensive items on there. And one of the items that we could not put into the energy project for this past year, for the year that we're currently in, are these things called ERVs.
Energy.
Exchange.
Exchange.
Right.
So what happens is that's where the air comes in and you need the fresh air to come into the building so you don't get carbon dioxide too high in the building. So it keeps the air where it should be. But you have to have these, they're on the roof. They're really expensive, about seventy thousand per ERV. So we have to replace those. They're thirty years old. They're old, only scavenged together for so long, so we gotta replace those. And we know that and there are something like thirteen of them up there. So we're gonna continue to do a little at a time. The seventy thousand bucks of whack is no small chunk of money. So we laid, you know, we put that out there. We said if we have an expendable trust that we continue to fund year over year and we budget that out on an even equal basis, then we're not gonna have these big spikes of need for building improvements, right? And we want that to be something that you can look at, something that you can see and say, yeah, okay, great. We understand these really big projects. There's a roof coming up, things like that. So what we're asking is to put two hundred thousand into that expendable trust. We have money in a different buildings and grounds expendable trust right now that will be used to start paying for some of these projects. But over time, if we really make a concerted effort to just budget a bit every single year where you can see that, you can look at the capital improvement plan and go, yep, you guys did exactly what you said. You're gonna replace this room, you did that. Yes, you did this. It lends good transparency and accountability to everybody, but we do have some pricier projects. It's a big building. It's a big place. We gotta keep going. So this is one way for us to fund those projects so that it's clear to everyone what we're up to. And so that's what we're asking out of some surplus, to be able to take two hundred out of surplus and put it into that fund. So that is the Stark budget in the world. Ask plenty of questions. And I'll answer them the very best I can. I may not have every last.
Different questions, huh?
Please.
I got a question. I was at the informational meeting at the high school.
Yes.
Where you handed out line item budget. And I asked a question based on some, excuse me, on athletic salaries.
Yes, you do.
And my question was, and still is, your default number is like twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars higher than your proposed.
I believe that's been corrected.
We reduced it.
Yes.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes.
We reduced it.
It was a mistake. It was a mistake. It was corrected in itself.
So did that reduce your default budget line, your bottom line there?
It changed the numbers. Now there's a differential of a hundred and six thousand as opposed to the hundred and ninety, whatever. But yes, you found it, John, and we thanked you for it.
I just have another question as I was going through this. Let's see if I can find it again. Had to do with the principals. Principals salary, there we go. In the current budget year, you have a budget of three forty-nine, four seventy. And the proposed is three sixty-one, zero, zero, five. And as we know, the principal is now gone, so you'll be hiring a new principal. And my question is, that principal was there for roughly five years. I'm assuming that his salary would be higher than somewhere you're just hiring. So I'm wondering as to why that line would increase by twelve thousand dollars roughly.
So there's, I think the positions under that principal line, so there's the lead principal and the two assistant principals in that same line. So there are certainly salary adjustments. I can't predict what the new person would be and how that salary would go. It depends on if we hired a principal who was sort of a newer person, maybe that would be less. If we hired someone who came in with a lot of experience, maybe we would not hire them at a lower rate necessarily. But also those assistant principals would have increases in their salary lines as well. So those increases are certainly in there. So it's hard to predict that because you go to hire, I'm not so sure what we, you know, we haven't made that decision yet.
There was one other line item here, a question, speech.
Yeah.
Speech therapy or speech, whatever it was. You had a budget of one year, fifty-two thousand dollars or something. For two years, it was zero dollars and now you have it budgeted at, I can't find that line right now, but it's somewhere around that fifty-some odd thousand again. Did you tell me what's the story behind that?
Sure. So special education kiddos get speech services at school if it's part of their IEP. So it depends on our student population. If we don't have anyone who necessarily needs speech, then it's not there. If they do, they do. We've had a really hard time hiring the speech folks throughout the whole SAU. That's been very tough. So.
It might be a transfer, John. I would have to go back and dig into the budget because we had a speech pathologist that was salaried. She left and we could not hire, I mean, there's a shortage around the state of speech pathologists.
We need contracted services.
So we had contracted services. So the contracted services line, there was a transfer there.
Right. So.
If we could hire.
In that line item where it's back up to fifty-some odd dollars.
We're hoping to, we're gonna go out again and look to hire somebody so, because the contracted services are almost double what a hire would be.
I would hope to have one. It would save us a ton of money to have a higher speech.
So in effect, if you can't hire a speech pathologist.
We're back to contracted.
That fifty-two thousand dollars would go back into.
It's gonna be back.
Unreserved fund balance at the end of the year or how's that work?
So it would.
They would transfer the fifty-two from the salary line into the contracted services because we still have to pay for the services.
We're gonna be short fifty.
Doesn't the contracted services already reflect what you think you're gonna need for next year?
No, we've reduced that line.
Okay.
Yeah, it got reduced. So we'd be in the hole technically if we had to go back to contracted services, so I'm hoping we don't. If you're talking to anybody going to college, speech pathology is a huge need right now. It's just a huge need. We cannot hire.
I have a question on the expendable trust.
Yes.
Are you creating a new expendable trust?
A brand new one for capital improvement.
And do you have one for, you have another one as well?
So we have regular buildings and grounds. So that would cover things like, on an emergency, buildings and grounds where, let's see, for some reason the track got messed up for some reason and, you know, it was unanticipated. You know, make something up or we get a twister that hits up there. We would use that for that sort of thing. But we're really looking to create a different one that's for maintenance that we absolutely can predict. We absolutely know we need ERVs. We absolutely know we need a roof. Those kinds of things that are predictable. Take that total sum cost, which you'll see on the web, you'll see the total sum cost divided out year over year and that's the number we're looking for. That way it's predictable.
So the building and grounds.
It has money in it right now, which will be sucked up by the roof project.
And that roof project head forth would be part of this new expendable trust in terms?
So we'll look, because that's part of the roof, so we're not looking to be the entire roof. But we know the part of the roof that needs to be done, that will mostly happen out of that original buildings and grounds. But looking over the course of time, we know there's more. There's a lot more to do. And you'll see that that project list is extensive and it's very, very specific. Frankly, it's very, very tiny, so I hope that we'll be able to blow that up on the computer screen.
And where's the funding coming from?
Surplus.
Surplus. Yeah, it's out of surplus. So we're asking to fund that out of surplus. So if there's money left over, left over at the end of the year from our budget, we're asking that two hundred of that be able to be set aside in that fund.
And do you have any idea, is there, is, how do that maintenance, known maintenance, major items that will have to be repaired or replaced?
Can you say that again?
The money that's in there, the purpose of the fund, is it to cover maintenance?
It's to cover, yeah, so things that are on the capital improvement plan. So things like, not regular maintenance, like you're gonna fix a leaky sink, but knowing that we're gonna need to replace sinks and toilets, know that we're gonna need to replace flooring that might be, as it ages. So looking at the building, what you would normally consider things like boilers, like systems in the building, maybe windows or whatnot that might over time be necessary. I don't have that whole CIP in my own head, but I have looked at it carefully on the capital improvement plan that you could see. And there are substantial projects. The ERVs make up a huge piece of that. Like I said, seventy thousand dollars, I think it's thirteen of them. So that's not an inconsequential.
What's the time period that's gonna be identified?
We have multiple that must be done immediately. They are past their prime. I mean, you're talking duct tape and ridiculous measures, keeping them going as we speak. So they are, they are past. They need to happen now.
Is it projected over a ten year period, five year period or?
I have to go back and look at the plan. I apologize. I did not commit that. I don't sit on the, I don't do the.
But it would be fair to say probably that you're gonna ask for twenty thousand dollars every year, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And then when you don't have surplus?
Then we don't get it.
Then we're gonna kick the can down the road and do what I said that I don't want to do.
I mean, if you, if this article gets approved, in the following year, there isn't any surplus. You have to put that article in the warrant.
It would be every year.
You have to put that article in the warrant every year, right?
Every year so that we could, we could look at that every single year and have that conversation, absolutely. Yeah. This is just a way to start that process. I think generally in schools, we haven't always done a great job of saying, look at what our needs are twenty years out, right? We build a school, we're like, yay, we got the school built. Well, you know what? It all still has to be kept up and maintained and things replaced over a long period of time. And if we don't look at it in long chunks, especially because school board members, right, we all get elected, you get three years. Maybe you stay for six, maybe you stay for nine, that we all kind of have this short sighted view sometimes. And it's really nice to open that view up and say, hey, let's make this a little more sustainable for the long term because we, all these communities, we've invested so much money into this infrastructure, we should be keeping it up and being good stewards of it. That's the whole.
I believe that expendable trust funds are, have been rewarded that it's really a reserve fund. Capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds are pretty much almost identical. The only thing is the agents to expend. Because if you don't have agents to expend, the only way you can expend money from that fund is an annual vote.
It's a public hearing how we.
The school board members are agents.
Your agents to expend, I would say.
Yes.
You opt to have.
We have a public hearing and we.
You don't have to have a public hearing for that.
Yes, we do. The way our articles are written, it's with a public hearing.
Where your articles?
The way the expendable trust article was written initially, it was the school board is named as the agents who can expend with a public hearing.
All right. And this is a new expendable trust fund that you're creating? So the same articles of incorporation, whatever you wanna call it.
Same revocation.
Apply to that?
Yep.
Is that an RSA or is this something that the school decided?
This was how the school chose to write the warrant article so that, yes, the school board oversees that money, but it's with public input.
It's not public approval, it's public.
Just a, it's a public hearing. It's a public hearing, right? And we did vet that with our attorney to make sure that that was written properly.
Could you tell me on the seventeen eighteen school year budget, was that a default or was that?
Our budget's been approved each year at start. We haven't been on. Right, we haven't been approved.
So seventeen eighteen and the eighteen nineteen, you have been approved.
They were proposed. Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Really now about the budget, but the homeless, does that mean if a child was going to school in Manchester and he comes to live with his grandparents in Ware or?
Yep.
Then we bust them back to Manchester?
Yes.
Of course, I've heard of it.
Yeah, so Manchester, I know, Manchester and Ware would share the cost of that busting for that child. You can imagine how expensive that gets because it's not like you need a whole bus to come out here. So you get one of the vans. The van would come out, but you're still talking a driver in a van and, you know, roughly that's, I don't know, maybe ballpark, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. So it's, I mean, we do try to pool our resources. So we say, hey, Gothstown, you have one of those guys too, so we're gonna drive out to Ware and then pick the Gothstown guy up and then, you know, do what we can to try to combine.
So this is a growing problem?
It's a growing problem. It's partly because of the opioid accident issue, right? Because you have most who, we see so many of our grandparents having their children. I mean, I'm an attorney. I do a lot of this work and so I have a lot of clients who have their grandchildren.
Is that because of the homeless designation rather than because they, their domicile is in Ware or in Hunter? It seems like they would be just become a Ware or Hennecker.
They should be. So once, say in a situation like that where the grandparents then get guardianship, then they would then become a resident in that new town. Or if you have a situation where you have maybe a divorce happening, so I've seen that where one parent and the children wind up kind of staying with someone and not really getting their feet settled and set until, you know, maybe four, five, six months later that happens.
Because they would not change without that too.
Right. So you see that sometimes and then there just are issues like in Hennecker where we had that campground where folks had been living and then they shut that down. So those kids then, wherever they went, wound up needing that transportation. So it happens and.
It's not a load back.
It's not. Well, it's new to us too. It's something that, you know, kind of comes and gets dumped in your lap and you go, well, we gotta take care of it.
Yeah.
Do you have enough experience with the cost neutral heating system at John Stark to say whether it's working as expected?
Well, we're in our first season, so I don't, I can't say that for sure. But we have been, EEI, when they prepared the proposal and we presented it to the voters, said, look, we're guaranteeing you that you're gonna see the savings on the energy cost is gonna be the same as your cost to make the purchase of the equipment installation and all that. And so they said that's a guaranteed, it's a guaranteed rate, I guess that's what you would call that, a guaranteed rate between the two. So, um, that's what they have told us. I'm certainly hoping, um, we are in our first week or two of running the boiler. So, um, it is, it's a really unique, um, piece of equipment. I, I got to see it in action. And even if you think about how many tons of wood chips go into that, it produces for waste for the whole heating season, about one trash can or less of ash from that boiler. It's unreal. I know how much ashes I take out of our wood.
I get that with one bird in my mouth. My wood stove.
I mean, it is unreal what comes out of it. But you're talking, you know, he, it's a trash can, like a regular trash can. He says, oh yeah, you know, by the end of this season, maybe you'll have this much. Cause somebody said, hey, can we use it to put on the field? And he goes, you won't even have enough. There won't be enough ash to even do anything. Yeah, it's not even enough to do anything on a sidewalk at all. So it's that efficient. It was really incredible to see. And I'm hoping that the technology, just as things keep getting better, we're gonna realize more savings. What would be great is if our electric bill would go down, but it's not going down. And so that's costing us more money as well.
No, Audrey, going back to you, is your proposal for your furnace, is it the same as what John Stock has?
It's that budget neutral.
So it's gonna be the same program just?
It's, it's budget neutral, John, but it's propane, not wood chip.
Oh, is that wood chip?
No, they don't have the footprint. We don't have the footprint to put a silo on, nor is the building large enough to get enough in energy costs to offset the, what the equipment would cost.
Now, are they forecasting the same kind of savings though that John Stock?
Yes, they, they guarantee the same kind of savings. Yep. But it's a propane. I just wanna make sure it's a propane. So when you go by and look for the silo.
There'll be silo.
Do you know what happened to the silo and the boiler that were decorating the cake?
Oh, the three D printer?
I'm not sure who got to keep it, but that was.
The student kept it.
That's so amazing.
The boy kept it?
Yes.
I gave it to him because he spent so much time designing.
The night they had the, as she calls it, the ribbon cutting, um, I guess it was the food service that made the cake. And on one end of it, there was a silo and the other end was the boiler done on a three D printer.
One of our students designed it.
Absolutely to scale. And then around the cake, that was on the ground, was, um, cut up sugared pretzels to resemble wood chips.
My phone is small, but I can show you.
I was there, I saw it.
Yeah, you didn't see it.
Based on that then, you would have to install a propane tank then at the elementary school? And it's gonna be far away from the school or, you know, or?
I don't know. Well, it'll be regulation, obviously. I mean, we've got a propane system at the middle school, right? We've got a propane tank at the middle school. That, that's all done by specs and regulations and.
Yes, right.
The only difference the world is.
Is the middle school heated by propane?
It is.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna call it. Cause if nothing else, everyone needs to get up and stretch. Uh, but, uh, as, as I said, the, the open conversations, they're always the best part of this, uh, kinda thing. And there's still coffee in the east here. Uh, thank you very much for coming. A lot more information than, than you can really see on the paper.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's hard just to see.
We'll make sure we advertise this so people can see it. Thank you very much. We'll make sure we advertise this so people can see it, thank you very much.